Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. I'll try and conduct the meeting without this gadget here, but if you have trouble hearing me, I'll turn it off. Before we actually start the meeting, we have Senator Black here, and he'd like to have a couple of words because he's trying to make as many town meetings today as he can.
Thank you. It's been an honor and privilege to serve District 5, Town of Anson, the last two years. It is one of the largest Senate districts. It goes from Wilton to Aristoc County. It has towns in Northern Kennebatt, Southern Franklin, and most of Somerset. I would say that we've been very fortunate the last couple of years, the last three or four years, that there's been generous revenues coming in. But the bad part about that is that we've been spending those revenues and we've been building a baseline budget, which is going to be hard to maintain. It's, uh, we're going to be seeing, I believe, revenues falling off, and that means with the larger budget baseline that we're going to see cuts in the future. That's my prediction. I've been advocating for rural Maine. I've been advocating for our education system, highways and roads instead of new programs. But I'm in the minority party, and I, my vote sometimes doesn't count to what's happening. But I am very concerned at where we're headed, and I hope that I'm being a pessimist, but I see that we're going to have shot falls. Maybe not in the next couple of years, but when it comes, it's going to come hard because we built a budget. In just the length of the time I've been there, it was $6 billion, and now it's pushing $13 billion. And so to maintain that means, you know, tax dollars are going to have to be spent on it. And as they drop, that means cuts. I serve on the IFW Committee and Ag Conservation Committee, which both are very crucial to rural Maine. And I'm running again this fall. I love your support. My phone number should be in the book, but some of you know how to get ahold of me anyway. So call me at any time. I'll take your call day or night. And I'm very pleased to be able to represent you in Augusta. Thank you. I've got a couple more town meetings. This is my fifth one today. I've got a couple more to go to. So I'm going to run, but don't be afraid to call me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing is...
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to say something if I could, please.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to have this meeting postponed because the county floor is inactive.
Put it on your floor.
Anybody up?
Inactive.
Yes, inactive.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. I've got some other instructions I want to give before we act on that motion. After reading over a robust rule of order a few times, I realize that I haven't been conducting a meeting just as I ought to. One thing is, when a motion is made and seconded and discussion starts, I should be alternating those who speak. The first one that gets to speak is the one in favor of the motion. The next speaker, if they so choose, will be someone who is against the motion. And we alternate back and forth. The reason for that is, if I recognize four people in a row, and they're either for or against the article, the person that's opposing that hasn't got a chance to speak yet. So it might prolong the meeting a little bit, but I think it's fairer to do that. Also, sometimes articles get a little lengthy, and I can't stop discussion. I can ask if there's anything new to be brought up. And there's a tool called Move the Question. And we've used it in the past. Some people don't know about it. When somebody says, "Mr. Moderator, I moved the question," all discussion stops. And there's a vote taken. Well, I always did it as a majority. And that's wrong. It has to be two-thirds in favor of moving the question. The reason is, you're denying somebody a chance to speak if you pass that motion. So we'll be counting to make sure there's a two-thirds majority, and then we can go and discuss the motion. Okay?
Can we act on that?
I'm going to ask for somebody to speak on that issue. And if I follow the rules I just laid out, then I have to call on somebody who is in favor of that motion first.
I'm in favor.
Okay. Is that the end of, you just want to say you're in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay. Someone who is opposed to the motion gets a chance to speak next.
Can we use the microphone, please?
Oh, sure. There it goes. Okay. So there's been a motion made that we adjourn the meeting because there's no...
An inaccuracy.
An inaccuracy.
And the suitcase is due until the 1st.
Okay. So you're asking to postpone the meeting because inaccuracies in the town report, not the fact that there isn't a law of order. You're... Okay, I'm going to try to get without this. Apparently it's not working properly. Okay. I'm going to do the best I can to explain what you've just said. She wants to postpone the meeting because there are inaccuracies in the town report, not just because there's no audit. They're difficult. Try this one.
Well, what's an inaccurate?
Yeah, my question is, what are the inaccuracies and why does it from a meeting?
If you like, we're...
Please, 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 address the moderator one speaker at a time. We're going to keep this orderly. Okay, you, sir?
Yes, what are the inaccuracies that have caused this motion? And why do those inaccuracies require a postponement of the meeting?
Okay.
Can I read to that?
Go ahead.
Because some of the articles that you're supposed to pass, some of the figures are wrong, and you cannot pass those articles as long as those figures are wrong. Those figures have to be accurate in order to be able to pass those articles. That's why I said...
Okay.
At town meeting, the townspeople can actually change the figures on any of the warrants. None of those are actually set in stone. You guys have the right to vote something up or down. So that can be changed.
Additionals and...
The suitcase is due.
Please, one at a time.
There's like some of your add-ins and subtractings are not quite right on your articles.
That could be, but when an article is stated, and because the articles in this town are written in such a fashion is there's no money in the written article. It only comes at the bottom as a suggestion.
Correct.
So that can be moved up or down at any time because it's not included in the article. Okay? Now, that lady up here said, are you a resident of the town?
I am.
Okay, please stand and speak.
I think, I think part of the problem is because of the inaccuracies of numbers and in beginning balances that were reported that don't match ending balances from last year's report, that there is no faith in some of these numbers until we actually, and I have heard the audit is complete, but we'd like to now digest that audit prior to actually accepting the numbers that were given to us.
There is no completed audit at this time?
They still have not completed.
No.
So we'd like to postpone it until the audit is completed.
Okay. So I want to explain, and that makes sense. We have a lady here who previously worked for the town that lives in Mercer. She has copies of other towns, and there's a letter in their town report saying that the audit is complete. And I'll take the liberty of telling you the information. We had an auditor for years. They have chosen not to serve small towns anymore. So they let us know, and other towns know that they would not be doing the audit. So that created a ha, a scurry of towns to find auditors. We finally found one, but they were not prepared to do an audit in time for this town meeting. And we're not the only town. Now, one of the problems with postponing the town meeting, if you would read Article 3 in here, you would see that every year we vote on Article 3 to allow the selectmen to pay one quarter of the bills and not beyond that. So as of April 1st, you've completed one quarter of the year and presumably paid one quarter of the bills. So if you follow that article to the letter, you can't pay, other than the Highway Department, you can't pay regular bills, school district, anything else that pulls out of these budgets. So if there's no audit done in time for us to have another town meeting before April 1st, I think it's going to be a case for lawyers to decide because any action taken might not be legal. I don't know. So anyway, yes, Jeremy?
What are the debt service payments due for all of the monies borrowed that we apparently have outstanding loans and payments that come to one of those dates?
They go all throughout the year. You may have like, I think...
Do we have any big ones that you don't want to default on between hours?
Yeah, the school. The school, we owe a month.
The school is a month ago.
$198,000.
The lady in the back who's not a resident, who was a former employee here, has raised her hand to speak. I need a two-thirds vote to allow her to speak.
I move to allow her to speak.
All those in favor of allowing her to speak, please raise your hands. Downhands, those vote. Would you come up front, please, to spread your weight, and maybe you need to use this little device here? Some of you will recognize her as being in the office in the past.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nancy Gove. I was the bookkeeper for the Town of Anson, worked with TME for six years. Then my hometown Mercer approached me.
I've got some people that can't hear you, so there you go.
Hi, I'm Nancy Gove. I was the bookkeeper for the Town of Anson for six years. I now work in my hometown of Mercer, and I'm the clerk, the tax collector, and the treasurer. We use RHR Smith as well as Anson. When I worked for Anson, we had Purdy Powers and Company do the audit. I do know that RHR Smith is probably, they do more audits in Maine than any other auditor. It's not uncommon for calendar year towns, that means those that operate on a January to December year and have a March town meeting, to not get the audit done and printed in time for the town meeting. I have New Sharon's town report here, and they just put a simple note that said the audit wasn't available when they printed the town report. For me, for my audit, RHR Smith has given me a short report, and I barely got that in in time. They did my audit the third week in January, which was really cutting it close. I have a town meeting later today myself. My full audit, I didn't get until the end of April to be able to share with the townspeople. So just be careful how you proceed because you could shut down your town. The, Anson is kind of unique in not putting the dollar amount in your warrant article. It is kind of risky to do that to be able to increase the budget amount or decrease the budget amount. Whether you're concerned with the ending balance of one year and the beginning balance of another year really has nothing to do with your warrant articles. Oftentimes, what happens is, at the end of the year, you pay every bill on December 31st if it's a working day. And then bills come in, in the month of January, which relate to the prior calendar year. And the auditor will make you go back and expense that. So it could just be a timing thing, meaning the new bookkeeper or the bookkeeper since I left printed it maybe as of the 31st. But then the auditor came in and said that we, you might have had to have paid these bills out of last year's budget because they belonged in that accounting period, which would then change your beginning balance. So I wouldn't assume right out of the gate that there's wrongdoing. I would assume that the auditor required the new bookkeeper to make adjustments.
You had your hand up first. Go ahead. Yeah?
So I didn't know any of this coming in other than I read the book and then, what the heck? So that's why I'm here today. I have 32 years meaningful experience, county experience now. I think maybe, and maybe I'm assuming, the perception is the trust here. You know, we went for four, six years without an audit.
Right, well, more than that.
More, six, eight years.
And more than that of an incomplete audit.
Incomplete, no audits.
There's a disclaimer every year.
Multiple, multiple years. And so I think the townspeople are probably questioning. Also, I don't think it's just the person that maybe took the money. I'm sorry, I went to a board meeting also. I think it's also the credibility of the selectmen and the manager that was there, or AA at the time, and the auditors that were not watching the books.
Right.
I'm sorry, and I expressed that back then. So I understand. And like I said, I didn't know coming in that this was even a thing. I was here to listen to the town meeting because I'm always interested. But I hear what people are saying, and maybe there is a concern.
You had your hand up again.
And I would, I really do want to make it clear, I don't think anything is unworthy of vote. That is not it at all. I'm not saying there's... Something happening in the background is not. My concern is because there are so many adding and subtracting errors in the warrants themselves, and because there is no reason in this book why last year's ending balance doesn't match this year's, there could have been just a statement put in there. It makes us wonder if Tammy is not overs... She has so many things on her plate. The other thing that concerns me, when I called last Friday and said, "We have no year-to-date numbers." And again, this is no reflection on Tammy personally. It was as if they had never even tracked this book to see that those numbers weren't in here. They had no idea that the expenditures for 2023 were not included in this book. There was a blurb on page 13 about the audit being complete, and I know that when one of the townspeople called and, because they didn't see the last page and on page 13 after the treasurer's report, it said, "Call the office for a copy of the audit," which she did. And it was very curtly, which we have on tape, responded to her, "Well, if that's what you're going to pick out of this book, we're townspeople. We have a right to ask that without getting an attitude." It makes us, and it, it does. We want to see the numbers now because people are stretched too thin. And if those things are caught and put out to everyone in the town, it makes us wonder what else.
Okay. Troy, you had your hand up.
Ms. Moderator, so there's two things. We have a budget that we pass at town meeting. And then there is a possible audit issue. The audit is being done or will be done?
Will be done.
Okay.
It will be available to the townspeople when it's completed. Then, then if there's questions on the audit, you would contact the town office. You would have a agenda item at a selectmen's meeting. If things couldn't be settled there, you would call a special town meeting, and you would discuss the audit in detail then. So everybody would get a chance to discuss the audit and the numbers.
Okay, so if there's any discrepancies in the numbers of the articles, we can change them as we go through?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep. And they, and in the way the articles are written, you can change it up, you can change it down, you can do whatever you want.
So, I mean, I think there's, I don't know if there's a motion or not, so...
There's a motion on the floor to postpone the town meeting, and we will vote on that.
Okay.
Okay? So, anyone, yes, any?
First of all, I can tell you, when I first came on, you guys never had this custom report put into your town report.
Okay, she's going to use it.
Okay.
When I first came on, you never had this custom report put into your town report. This is really a worksheet that I use for your budget just to put it in the trio. And then once you have town meeting, all these numbers can change really based on what today's vote is. I can tell you, FIRE is going to ask me to change one of them. I'm going to have you change, see if a number can be changed. So these numbers in your warrant articles are not set in stone until you vote on them today. As far as the custom budget report, just like I told you that day, I was in the 2004 year because we go back and forth at the end of the year. And if you've ever done any bookkeeping, you would know I was in the wrong year when I clicked it, and that's why it did not do year-to-end. I apologize to everybody for that. I clicked the wrong year. That's why it did not give you year-to-date. Once you brought that to my attention, I immediately went in and quit that report for you. So I apologize if I really wronged Troy. I gave you... Well, I am because I feel like that...
I'm not attacking you.
I didn't say you are. I'm just saying what I said. And as for your beginning balances, I'm actually, in your town report, if you guys can actually look at Article, not Article, the, hold on. Your Treasury report. If you go to your Treasury report, which, let me see what page it's on, page 12. On, for instance, your Fire Department money market account. It started at 207-4711. It earned interest of 103-47 throughout the year. You ended at 207... Excuse me, I don't remember. It was on...
207-564...
564-49. Thank you, Daniel.
You're welcome.
So you can actually see, if you go back to your town report last year, we voted to put money in that account and take money out of that account. Your auditors are going to come in and do adjustments. That's what they're going to do. This town only has one due-to-from account, and they're going to come in and they're going to, for instance, they're going to tell me to put the money we got from ending in that account. They're going to tell me to put the $5,000 that the Fire Department wants in that account. They're also going to tell me what was voted in town meeting last year. For instance, the full-time firefighters, take that piece out of that account. So when you're looking at that number, it's going to change after the auditors have adjusted it. These auditors have always done it this way. I don't know how else to make it any clearer for you guys. We are going to have new auditors, and they're going to want us to do things differently their way. And we will change to how they want to do them also. If you, so your beginning, your ending balance is not always going to be your beginning balance of the next year. Like Nancy did speak, they always make us go back in and do a one-warrant in January, but they made me go in and hit the 2023 year. So this was, ran off to close our books at 12:31. That's what it was at that point. When we go in and do that last warrant, because my electric bill didn't come in until January 5th, Highway, some of their bills didn't come in till later, that will be adjusted after the fact. So if you're comparing those numbers, they're not always going to match. It's really what the auditors have done. I actually have a copy of every auditor adjustment that they tell us to do. Every one of them.
But should we also be able to follow down the transactions? Because some of these don't even add up.
Like what transactions?
Beginning balance and then the transaction throughout the year and then the ending balance. I'm not even thinking. Let's just say, Troy says the sewer checking account. It shows the beginning balance. It shows 798, it shows ending balance. It doesn't, it doesn't compute. Some of these just don't...
Well, I can tell you on sewer, they're going to transfer from the sewer account because Highway gets a stipend. So at, when the auditors come in, they're going to come in and they're going to do an adjustment of what we paid for Highway to do their stipend. It's going to come from the sewer to the general fund. So that's another example that those numbers are going to change your beginning and ending balance.
So I guess there's a question there that, you know, you can't, all of it is not viewed like that. If you, if 207-470, your beginning balance, plus interest of 103-47, does not compute, recording then 207-554, which is reported, is off by $9.09. That's just one example. There's one that's off, $7,846.93. Your beginning balance recorded in this report of 26,084.32, plus interest showing a $7.98, your ending balance of $18,245.37. If I take $26,000 at $7.98, I can't come up with $18,000.
Well, that may be how the Tre... And maybe Nancy, I don't know if you can explain this one better than me. That may be how the, I hate to say it this way, the bookkeeper typed that in for the treasurer's report. Maybe she pulled it from the wrong line. I don't know, that can happen.
Confidence issue. That's $7,800 that we have no idea. And you're telling me it's a, and people make the same, but you signed off on this. The whole board signed off on this. I assume somebody fact-checked it.
But these numbers are wrong and are set in stone.
It doesn't matter. Just the adding and subtracting of what you're submitting to us is incorrect. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, no, don't move me. So, so that makes us question. It just, if, it would leave... If I had a customer and sent them a statement like that and said, "I'm sorry, it's a typo," you think they're not going to look at the rest of their account? That's all we're getting. That's all we're getting.
And I will say, I've had multiple bookkeepers, even my bookkeeper beforehand actually told me that she had put a wrong number in the treasurer's report after it had already gone out.
It's not one number. That's a problem. They are both...
No, this is the first time.
One more time.
It's the first time. But it's bad. Neither here nor there is. Yes, it is.
Can we move the question?
When Bob Worthley or you had the other selectmen, they, this never would have left the office or the table because they all would have group read it and everything would have been done the way it should have been done.
I have a motion to move the question. So I have to stop discussion. Like I said, it takes two-thirds vote. So the motion on the floor is to move the question. We need two-thirds. All those in favor of moving the question, which means you're going to stop debate.[1742.88] If there's not two-thirds, we go back to debate. All in favor of moving the question? All those that. Oh boy, I had a count. Hold on, hi. I got 24. All opposed? Whoop, they're going up now.
I'm supposed to have?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I think two-thirds has got it.
Yeah, 21, 9.
We're gonna vote on the motion to postpone the meeting. Now, you've heard discussion about it, and I, as moderator, can't comment. So, all in favor of postponing the meeting, raise your hand. No downhands, those opposed. The motion is favored. Okay? So we're gonna continue with the meeting.
Yep.
Is there anything else that needs to be said before we actually open the meeting? Anybody question my procedure? Or anything you bring to my attention before we start?
Should we ask for a second? Ms. Moderator, I, I, I hope this is not out of order, but I, I still need a little bit of clarification on something.
Okay.
To help me vote, so that it may be permanent.
All right.
So if there is a, if there is an issue, if someone has an issue.
Right.
With the audit.
Okay.
The procedure would be, they go to a selectmen's meeting and request something be added to the agenda?
No, no, nothing to do with. We're gonna, we're gonna run the town meeting, and we're gonna take care of every article. We're gonna vote on it, we're gonna put money in the account to pay the bill. Okay, when the audit is done, they will have the copy in the office, and I'm sure they're gonna announce, the audits are here. Any citizen of the town is willing to go in and get one. Then, if you have a question about the audit, you will request a meeting with the selectman to have it explained. Then, if it's not explained to your satisfaction, you can petition the selectman to call a special town meeting and discuss it further. So once the audit is here, you'll be able to look it all over, form your own conclusions. If you have questions, you either get them answered one way or the other.
Thank you.
Okay? So, I, I don't know, I'll try using this thing. All right. So, all of that being said, we're gonna go to Article 3, which we discussed a few minutes ago. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Anson will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed 1/4 of the approved budget for 2024 between January 1st, 2024, and the date of the regular 2025 town meeting, with the exception of the highway and general assistance. I need a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved, and it's been supported. Is there discussion? Yes.
Is there a typo in that? Should that be January 1st, 2025, and the town meeting, and the date of regular 2025 town meeting?
Yes.
It should say 2024, date of regular 2024 town meeting.
No, no, it's gonna be 25.
Be 25 next year.
25, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we amend that motion to read January 1st, 2025.
All in favor of that? Downhands, those opposed, okay. All right, we got that being said. So, now we're gonna, is there any more discussion? All in favor of Article 3? Downhands, those opposed, it is a vote. Article 4. To see if the inhabitants of the town of Anson will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of $1,052,550, established in the town of Anson by state law, in the event that the municipal budget approved under the ensuing articles result in a tax commitment that is greater than that limit. Do I have a motion?
Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
Should we move Articles 4? 4, 5, and 6 as listed as written.
I'll second that.
Second.
There is no discussion. The motion has been made to accept Article 4, 5, and 6 as written. All in favor of that, please signify. Downhands, those opposed. Thank you. So those articles are approved as written.
Mr. High?
Yes.
I thought we were doing it one article at a time.
This is standard procedure. When you have articles that are not controversial, it's quite often to do this, usually back towards the end. But anytime there's a group where there's not apt to be any disagreement, this is common procedure. Okay? Article 7. To see what sum of money the inhabitants of the town of Anson will vote to raise appropriate for the budget of administration, including selectmen's wages. Administration, $402,740. Selectmen, $6,380. Request, 409, 120. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Yes.
That doesn't, that figure of 402, 740 doesn't match what was in the budget. It was, that's overstated by $200. Should that be reduced to 402,540?
The 200, I believe that's really probably part of the planning board one. Some of these, if you add them, are gonna get different accounts.
Between 7 and 8, the total is, does match the budget, but Article 8 is $200 under what was in the budgeted lines, and Article 7 is $200 over what's in the budgeted lines.
Because your planning board is in the other line. Because if you go, look at that.
Planning board was mentioned, is, is itemized down in Article 8. I think that's why I had a question on that.
Right, and, and I'm gonna go back to, this is a budget worksheet for me to work on, on our certain codes. When I have the code, they may be in here in a different spot.
It doesn't match what's in, I mean, it's, what wasn't, I'm, I'm going by the numbers that are in the book. That's represented in our book.
So one's $200 over and one's $200 beyond.
Right.
Well, that's because this one doesn't have the planning board in it, this one will.
Yes, Troy?
Are, are they supposed to match? Are these articles supposed to match what's in the budget? I think that, I, I mean, if we're voting on it, we're assuming that what's in the budget is what's written. So if it's not right, then it either needs to be amended to read what the budget says, or, or, or we don't vote on them, I guess. I just, that, that would be just, that's my question. Do they, should they match? If we look at the budget and look what is written in the article, should they be exactly the same?
They should be, you're hitting different accounts.
Right, but we're voting on it. So whether, whether the account or not, should it be, should they match? Because you can amend them. We could, we can fix it by doing it. Is it right for, are we supposed to do that on any article that's messed up?
It's not really messed up, is what I'm trying to tell you.
That quote was gonna come out of that. But. The budget that was presented to the town.
Okay, so if you want to move that, yes.
Okay, so, the amendment will be to reduce this by $200. Is that correct? To match the other number. Then, then you gotta correct the next one to include it.
Right.
Is that correct? Okay, wanna make an amendment?
Yes, I'm, I move that we amend administration of $402,540, which would bring the total request to, um, 408, 920.
Okay, all, did I have the amendment seconded, please?
Second.
Second. All in favor of the amendment, which reduces the 409, 120 by $200? All in favor of that? Downhands, those opposed. And this is gonna seem redundant. You just voted on the amendment. Now we got to vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion as amended? Please try again. Downhands, those opposed. Okay? Article 8. To see what sum of money the inhabitants of the town of Anson will vote to raise appropriate for the budget of special officers, and to authorize the board of selectmen to appoint the officials for the ensuing year. Special officers, 21, 775. Planning board, $100. Request, 21, 875. Do I have a motion? Yes. Do I have a second?
Well, as per the previous article, we should raise the special officers to 21, 975.
No, we gotta add 200.
Actually, special officers is 21,875, planning board 200. And then that brings the total to 22,075.
I probably had 200.
It, it was, it was $100 on each line. Special officers was understated by $100, and planning board was understated by $100.
Okay? You make an amendment? Is that correct? Okay? We haven't, we haven't actually voted the amendment yet. We voted the article. Now we gotta vote the amendment.
We got the amendment first and then the article.
Right, but has the amendment been approved?
We have, not yet. We have a motion on the amendment.
A motion for the amendment, please.
What is it?
It's to change the request from 21, 875 to 22.
075.
075. You're changing it by $100.
No, 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 no. 100 on each line. Right, 100 special officers, 100 planning board.
All right, sorry, well, there's the 200.
Yep, so.
Okay. All right, so who's gonna make the amendment? Who's gonna second it? All in favor of the amendment? Downhands, those opposed. Now we'll go back to the main motion. All those in favor of Article 8 as amended? Downhands, those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you.
Article 9.
Article 9. To see what sum of money the inhabitants of the town of Anson will vote to raise appropriate for the budget of full-time firefighters, wages, and benefits. Request is $148,740. Do I have a motion? I do. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Is there discussion? Arrow.
I would like to make a motion that we vote on this by secret ballot, please.
Yes, I, if you hadn't made the motion, I would have. Is there discussion first? Seeing done. Oh, go ahead, Troy.
It's been, we've, it's been one year?
Two years.
We had a grant before for that? And we're on our own, we would be on our own, yep, okay, thank you.
And so, I wanna make sure that this, nobody wants to comment on this article before we vote?
I will be.
Okay?
Um, I did have the assessors run the number on the, um, 148,740. Sorry, not loud person. Um, I had the assessors run the number on the 148, 740, and by taxation, that would be raised for this warrant article. Um, it would be $85 per 100,000 on, on your valuation for the year. So that's how much this would cost for this full-time firefighter.
Yes.
Has EMS paid us back anything for firefighters driving and assisting? That was in the very first part that we were going to do.
Can you say that again, please, so I can repeat it?
Has EMS reimbursed us for the use of our firefighters?
The question is, has EMS reimbursed us for the time that our firefighters spend with them? Any?
Um, yes, I know there's a lot, people think it's a confusing thing. Um, they do get called out for lift assist. We do not get reimbursed. That is regular firefighter duties, I guess, I would, I would put that. Anytime they are called to drive for them, and it's recorded that they've driven for them, then we bill EMS. And yes, EMS has paid us. And there has not been a lot of times. It can be hit or miss depending what the calls are.
Just wanna say a few words. The full-time firefighters, they're there, they're responding. They've saved some houses because of their, their quick response. They've saved the business, they've saved some lives. Just, just think about that. You've got two guys that are headed out in a truck, and the girl is right around them waiting for someone to get to the station. Just wanted to put that up.
Uh, the lady had her ear in for us.
I have just a question about, um, what the time these two full-time firefighters, how many calls have actually responded to?
Uh, both, oh, that's, that's.
Just, yeah, um, just them, and this report was done, um, at the end of October, so it could be a little different. But I had them down as 94. Um, your trees and wires were 22. Your propane leak was one. Your water rescue was one. Your fuel leak was two. Your fire alarms were six. Your motor vehicles were 12. Your fire were eight. Your building collapse was one. Your lift assist was 22. Your medical was three. Your mutual aid was five. Your traffic was two. Your elevator was one. Abandoned vehicle, one. CPR, three. Bomb, one. Unpermitted burns, two. Overdose, one. Now, some of those numbers will be different because it didn't go all the way till the end of the year, um, but that is what I have to call.
I have a great.
This gentleman had his hand up. Do you still wanna speak, sir?
No, she had, that was a question.
Now, uh, did you have any other?
Carrie? Yes. I was looking for my ticket to hold up. I seem to be losing it all the time.
Okay.
I have a breakdown of the year 2023 for all of us, as well as the breakdown of what we, as a call force, go to versus what the full-time firefighters go to. From 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, yes, there is 94 calls. If you guys wanna copy, I have a few of them here. Um, but the next breakdown from the 94 calls between 7:00 AM and 5:00 AM, they don't work holidays, so that takes away one of the calls. And they're only working Monday through Friday. So the 5, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM doesn't, they're counting the weekends too, that they're not at work. So I have a breakdown. It shows that there's a total of, uh, 76 calls, Monday through Friday excluding the town holidays. And then out of the, out of the 76 calls, 48 of them are the regular fire, car accident, trees down, and 28 calls are assist ambulance. But it also includes the driver. When we get called to be a driver, or the full-timers get called to be a driver. So I don't know if anybody's interested in looking at the breakdown of the 76 total calls from all of 2023.
I may be wrong, but I think the purpose when we started this was to cover during the day when people might be working and weekends would have been more people available. I believe that was the purpose. Go ahead.
It was the purpose, but the question was of the breakdown of the calls, so I was just getting it.
Okay, so, I'm out, please.
I'm the road commissioner. I know you fly, you probably know that, some of you don't. I have a radio that's on my side all the time, except for right now. And when I hear the tones go out during a working day, and the people that are in this room right now on the fire department, they might be on a trailer truck, they might be in a construction crew, they might be in a pit working someplace, they're not able to drop and go. If it's serious enough, things get shut down and they get there. But when you got a car accident, someone's got a broken leg, the bump, blood is pumping right out of them. Your full-timers get there, they save the life. You need to stop and look at this as if it's one of your family members. It might be your house. Yep, I didn't think we needed full-time firefighters either when we first decided to take and do it. But you know something? But you know something? I listen to the radio all the time. And if everybody in this room could listen to that radio and see who it is that shows up to an accident or the other night when we got toned out because there was trees down and whatnot. The ones that showed up to the trees that was down. The other night when we had a severe fire, everybody was able to show up then. But during the working day, lots of times you have people that are in the fire department, they just can't show up because they have a job they have to fulfill. So all I'm gonna say is, for eighty-five dollars on a hundred thousand dollars, that's pretty good insurance.
Okay. One more chance. Everybody wants to weigh in? Otherwise, we're gonna, yes.
Um, I, I will say that I'm a recent resident. I moved to Anson last year. Uh, I come from an area that is completely volunteer fire and rescue for the entire county. Uh, during the day, a lot of people have unfortunately not been able to get assistance and either lives have been lost or, um, entire buildings have been burned to the ground. Uh, it is an expensive proposition, um, but I also work as a nurse in a local hospital as, as an ED nurse. And those towns that do not have full-time firefighters for full-time rescue, when they get to us, they're in a lot more shape than when you have people ready to go in a moment's notice.
Okay. So we're gonna have a written ballot. Uh, we'll, we'll declare a recess until the ballot vote, excuse me.
Just to clarify. Is the ballot, are the ballots already made out or?
Yes, you're gonna, you're gonna get them over there at the table. You're gonna vote yes if you wanna keep this. You're gonna vote no if you don't.
Is it a check mark, yes or no, or?
Yes.
It is? It's have yes and no on it. All right. Okay. So that'd be simple. So we'll line up, you'll get your ballot, and you'll vote. And you put it in a box, and we're gonna have a recess until they're counted, and then we can go on to the next article. Okay? Okay, we go back to session now. The votes are in. There's thirty-two yes and twenty-two no, so I declare the article passed. And he's telling me how to use a microphone, and I don't know how to use it. Maybe I'll try it this way. Is that better? Okay. Uh, yes, sir?
What was the tally again? I didn't hear.
Thirty-two yes, twenty-two no. So the article is passed. Now, I also neglected to tell you, uh, the votes for the offices for the day. Brenda Garland got sixty-six votes. Larry Hugue got seventy-three votes. Pamela Mitchell got seventy-three. Georgiana Mansa got seventy-four. Steve Everett got seventy-nine, and I declare those elected. Thank you.
But there was still one more item on that ballot. That was the, uh.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah.
Uh, that was for, uh, is, is the, uh, uh, Water District trustee.
Oh, okay. Down the bottom. Randall Jones, seventy-seven votes. Sorry about that. Yeah, okay. He corrected me. I'll, I'll get this straight after, hopefully. Okay, I got a little.
Article ten is where we're at.
Article ten. Thank you, Dan. Article ten, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate for the Anson Fire Department. The request is one hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred dollars. Vote to selectmen and advisory board recommend yes. Do I have a vote? I have a motion. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do I have a second? Is there discussion? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
What do those, what are those monies for?
What are those monies for? Uh, they pay the fireman salaries, they repair the trucks, they buy equipment. Everything connected with the fire department comes out of it. While with the exception of buying a new truck or in a special account to buy SCVs or. One-time expenses usually raised separate. This is, this is yearly budget.
This, this has anything to do with the new fire station?
Nothing to do with the new fire station.
Or the firefighters being able to do their job.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Seeing no more questions, all in favor? Downhand, those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you. Article eleven, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate to match for the main forest service grant. Request is four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Recommend a yes by the selectmen and the advisory board. Do I have a motion? I do. I have a second. Discussion? Anybody wanna know what it's for?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
What is it for?
What is it for?
It's, um, it's a grant that we can fill out every year that we can purchase like wildland fire equipment, like hoses, pumps, uh, foam system that we put in our trucks to help like forest fires and stuff like that. And I try to match that grant every year. It kinda, kinda gives us a kickback at the end of the year, so we pretty much, it's a no-cost type of thing, but it sounds like a good thing.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor? Downhand, those opposed, it is a vote. Article twelve, to see if the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to negotiate on behalf of the town to provide fire protection to the town of Anson.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Downpass, those opposed, it is a vote. Article thirteen, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate for subsidy to the AMS ambulance service. Request forty-four thousand and five dollars. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Seconded.
Any questions? Yes, Carrie.
Is the per capita still the same if they held that line, or is this an increase?
There's, there's an increase.
There's an increase.
What was the per capita increase?
We went from seventeen to twenty-one. And it's only half in this budget because the ambulance's budget is up to July of the year. So it's half comes this year, and then the other half will show up next year.
Thanks, everybody. I know some of you can't hear that. There was an increase. Half of it shows up this year, half next year because the budgets aren't the same. Some is July, uh, July, and some is January, December.
So that'll be the other. You could, you went from seventeen to twenty-one, or something like that, or something?
Yeah.
So this is number of reflects.
The nineteen. It only reflects six months of it because that's all we're gonna get this year, six months. It goes up on, um, July first.
Okay. All in favor of the article? Downhand, those opposed, it is a vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Take a motion to accept articles fourteen through seventeen as written. All in favor? Downhand, those opposed, it is a vote. You've accepted fourteen through seventeen as written in your book.
Article eighteen, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate for the highway budget. Request is six hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, reduced by five hundred and twenty-five thousand to ninety-six fifteen from the two thousand twenty-three excise tax, to be raised by taxation, ninety-three thousand, sixty-three, eighty-five. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I have a motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Downpass, those opposed, it is a vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I make a motion. We accept article nineteen through twenty-five.
Nineteen through twenty-five as written. Do I have a second? Seconded. All in favor of accepting nineteen through twenty-five as written? Both of the guys were up there. Downhand, those opposed. We got it.
I have a question.
Yes.
For recreation.
Uh, you can, you can make a statement, but you can't. Go ahead.
I just have a question of where the ice skating rink is that we voted on and passed two years ago.
The ice skating rink.
There's still a fund for the ice skating rink, and that was only eleven, I think, I'm not gonna give you an exact amount because I'll come and hear that. Eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. Correct. And, and the ice skating rink that we're putting in would be a lot more. Um, we just haven't done any other fundraising or anything yet to, to finish the project. And honestly, I've been very busy with people the last couple of years and everything, so I, yes. I apologize for not getting the ice cream, the ice cream.
So money is still there to do the ice skating rink. It just hasn't been done.
Right.
Okay?
And I need to raise money, so if anybody would like to help.
Uh, we're having a donation box, as we. Okay, we're gonna have a little bit.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to article twenty-six, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate for the purpose of supporting the following charitable organization. Request. What's that? You don't even want me reading. Just want me accept.
Two dollars.
Okay, they don't wanna hear me talking, also. Is motion accepted as, as written?
Well, there's. There is a two dollar, the sexual assault advocacy support center should be eight oh two, and your total is twenty-nine, two forty-seven.
That's what it is.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Eight hundred, you need two forty-five.
Right.
Yes.
Should be two forty-five, uh, not, I think, yeah, two forty-five instead of two forty-seven. Eight hundred and fifty-five.
Right.
Yes. Should be two forty-five, uh, not, I think, yeah, two forty-five instead of two forty-seven. Okay. All right, so there was a motion to accept it as written. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion?
But Tammy just pointed out there was a two dollar discrepancy.
So you're voting on twenty-nine, two forty-five. Okay? All in favor? Downhand, those opposed, it is a vote. Okay, article twenty-seven, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate for the cemetery, monument, decorations, windmill repair, and North Anson Pond property river road fountain budget. Request fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Do I second? And a second. Is there discussion? Yes.
It, it's just a question. I know the fountain wasn't put in last year, but I saw in the budget, we spent two hundred and ninety-five dollars for electricity. Is there some way we can get that shut off easily, or because is that a fee for having just a? We spent more last year when the fountain wasn't put in than the year before when the fountain was put in, according to that.
Yes. Is there explanation?
I would have to call CMP and see.
So if there's no fountain and there's no electricity, then why did we have to bill? I think that's your question, right?
Still, yeah.
Okay? All right. A good point, and I'm sure somebody's gonna follow up on it. Yes?
I'd like to see if it get put in. All it lacks is a new cord, a power cord, to get it working again.
Okay. Gentleman says he'd like to see it working again needs a power cord. And we've got electrician around here. Hook that up for us. Okay, two good points. Thank you. Uh, we have voted on it, Dan.
Not yet, not yet.
Ah, thank you. He's asking, he's right, question. All in favor of, uh, article twenty-seven? Downhand, those opposed, it is a vote. Twenty-eight, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate for subsidy to the Kennebec Valley Regional Waste Cooperation, Recycling and Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. Request fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We're so moved. Second and seconded. Discussion? Yes.
Uh, I have a question on article twenty-eight is for the recycling and casual hazardous waste collection. That's fifty-five thousand dollars. Article twenty-nine is a hundred and thirty thousand for solid waste. And my question is, how much is proportionally going for recycling versus hazardous waste? It'd be more cost-effective just to shift it all over to solid waste and maybe not have that much money spent?
Yeah.
Is that a problem that could be answered right now, or?
It seems like there's just a hundred families that are concentrated in town.
Yeah.
I don't get it any sense of what volume this went to as recycling.
So one of the questions is, uh, recycling. Do we have a number for just recycling?
Yes. Um, there will be, this number is correct, fifty-five, six twenty-five. If you looked at the budget papers. No, but, uh, I'll finish this for you for a second. Um, the thousand dollars I did not put in because of that recycling day um, in Skowegen, because it was actually costing the town a lot of money. We had like one person go in the last two years. Like, they're just, they're not going.
I couldn't hear what you said.
I took the thousand dollars out of when you're looking at this budget piece here.
Yeah.
Into here. So your whole recycling program is fifty-five, six twenty-five. This is all recycling. That day I took out of it because I get some of this stuff after the budget's already started. And so your, your budget of fifty-five, uh, you readers, six twenty-five is your whole recycling budget. And as for the other part, I can't answer that.
Yeah, I'm just, hey, is it, is it cost-effective? We can use the recycling program, and we're making, it sounds like less than a thousand dollars from selling whatever recycled material is. I don't get a sense from this as how much is actually being recycled there. Uh, personally, we take our, our trash, the dolphin code in the recycling bin, the things that can be recycled. And I'm just wondering if that's fifty thousand dollars that we need to be spending?
Okay, the question is, are there on that board, Arnold?
This is, uh, I mean, this is something we've been proud of for almost forty years.
Right.
Since it first started, and every year at town meeting, it's, it's been supported. Whether it's worth it or not.
Program, and I'm just wondering if it's still.
Whether it's worth it or not is, you know, personal opinion. A lot of people don't recycle at all.
Exactly.
And some people want to, and, uh, I don't know how you put a worth it on it.
Well, I mean, in terms of the volume of things that are recycled, if ninety-nine percent of the waste goes to the dump and one percent goes to the recycling truck, does that worth fifty thousand dollars?
That, that's up to you.
I, I don't know if you know.
The facts, the facts are it costs more to recycle than it does to dump it like, period.
It does, but it saves space in the landfill.
You don't know that.
Right?
How many tons do we submit? Do you know?
Yes, there is a report in there.
And has it gone up or down? Do you know, Arnold? Because I, I didn't, I did not read that. I did not.
The cost of, the, the cost that we get for recycling goes up and down all the time.
No, I'm talking, has our tonnage gone?
My tonnage is pretty steady. It's gone up a little bit. It's gone up a little bit, but I don't know the actual.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the article twenty-eight? Please. Not all in favor? Downhand, those opposed, it is a vote. Article thirty, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate for the disposal of solid waste and will authorize the board of selectmen to negotiate for same. Request is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We got a motion. We got a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Downpass, those opposed, it is a vote. Article thirty, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to raise and appropriate for debt service. Request is two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Load of payment, twenty-two, two ninety-five. Truck lease, ten thousand, two twenty-eight. Full road loan, hundred twenty-eight, five thirty-eight. Fire truck payment, one twenty-two, one sixteen. And I have a note here. The Kennebec Valley Regional Development Authority needs to be changed to twelve thousand, eleven, one, one, three, instead of one, three, three. I follow. Uh, regional authority, twelve thousand, one, one, three, instead of one, three, three. It's twenty dollar, twenty dollar, Mr. President.
But your total is correct.
The total is correct. Okay? Funded as follows. I'm sorry, I didn't finish that. Nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars KIDA refund. Fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty DOT local road assistance. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven thirty-nine taxation, for a total, two ninety-five, two ninety. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We do, and we have a second. Is there discussion? Yes.
Reply for grant, help pay for that cut.
Yep, I applied for multiple grants, so we didn't, we didn't receive any. We got denied on three of them.
Did they say why we didn't refuse?
Um, yeah, one of them is in the area of, um, how close we are to other fire departments. Um, and actually, um, some of them for that cost of that truck, we said we didn't qualify for, I guess, the size of our.
Okay. All in favor of article thirty? Downhand, those opposed, it is a vote. Article thirty-one, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of town of Anson will vote to appropriate for the fire reserve, capital reserves, Anson. Request fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. Funded as follows. Fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, town amendment, fire protections. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes.
So moved.
So moved. Supported? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Downpass, those opposed, it is a vote. Downhand, so it's opposed, there's a vote. Uh, yes? I'm sorry we can't. I'm sorry we can't. There's a correction on Article thirty-two. So, I'm gonna read the article, then if you wanna do the others. To see what sum of money the inhabitants of Town of Anson will vote to raise in appropriate into the fire capital reserve for FCBA tank replacement and cabin mine oxide director. The request originally was eight thousand dollars. The request now is eleven thousand, six hundred. So I'll entertain a motion, then we can discuss it, yes?
My question was, what was the reason for this?
Well, we need, we need a, we need a motion on the floor first. You're gonna move which, which number?
The eleven thousand, six hundred, whatever you, yep.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Now without discussion, yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, what was the reason for the increase?
Okay, the reason for the increase.
So, when I, we needed, uh, new gas detectors for all the fire trucks. Uh, the reason being why that number has changed because I forgot that last year we had raised for the SCV replacements from, I think it was, what, three thousand, we found, up to five. I forgot about that when I calculated for the gas detectors, so that put that money... And also because as I was talking to my deputy chief, the inflection on the cost of materials on the SCV tanks again has gone up when it comes to replace them, so that's the reason being for that, okay?
You guys used Department of Fire, James?
Yes.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Is that enough to cover you guys on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, any more discussion? So the article you're voting on is Article thirty-two and you're voting on eleven thousand, six hundred dollars. All in favor? Downhand, so it's opposed, there's a vote. Article thirty-three, to see what sum of money the inhabitants of Town of Anson will vote to raise in appropriate in the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars to purchase a duck body for the two thousand duck truck. Request is fifty-four thousand, three twenty-eight, funded by Highway Reserve Fund, fifty-four thousand, three twenty-eight. Selectmen and advisory board both recommend yes. Do I, and I have a vote, and I have a second, is there discussion? Yes, sir, Phil?
How long does the truck have to be left in service?
How long do you expect the truck to be in service? This is a two thousand duck truck.
For at least another five years plus.
Five years plus?
I'll...
Okay, go ahead.
I'll explain that to you, Phil. That truck right there was the old mechanical type, truck tires and motor goes and everything, there's no JAP on it or anything. And I talked to a mechanic that works on our trucks. And he said that he would keep that truck over a newer truck. So, it's not just me saying that I wanna keep an old truck. That truck right there has got a brand-new frame put underneath it, the rear end's been rebuilt, the transmission's been rebuilt, and the motor's still going strong. So, the body that's on it has been repaired twice so we could get through to now and it's time we need to have a newer truck. And, I don't wanna jinx myself, so I'm gonna start.
Yeah, okay, any other questions on that one? Okay, Article thirty-three, all in favor of fifty-four thousand, three twenty-eight taken from the Highway Reserve Fund, please signify. All downhand, so it's opposed, there's a vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we take Article thirty-four through forty-one as written?
Thirty-four through forty-one.
That's going to the end of the warrant.
Do you see a problem? Okay, uh, was there a motion?
Yes.
A second? Now we're taking Article thirty-four through forty-one.
Yeah, which is the end of the warrant.
Which is the end of the warrant. Taking them as written in the book. All in favor? Downhand, so it's opposed? Uh, yes?
I have a question for forty-one, though. I, I think it should be worded differently than, only because in the budget it is worded differently. If you look at the piece on page thirty-four, it's, because the way it's worded makes it sound like we are gonna do up to the two hundred thousand plus any FEMA that goes with it. But in the budget, it's written, it would reduce the taxation on anything we receive by FEMA?
It won't reduce taxation, it depends what we get from FEMA. Um, I, I'm not gonna tell you what the number is going to be, um...
Can I read the, what you have on page thirty-four? It says highway garage bond to fix culverts and pipes on Madison Street, not to exceed the two hundred thousand. If FEMA funding is paid on this project, it will offset the taxation.
Correct, and, once again, those are...
It doesn't say offset.
I'm gonna be honest, those are my notes for the budget to tell me what I'm gonna be doing for it. When I say that if we get FEMA money, we're gonna raise two hundred thousand dollars right now 'cause I don't know what I'm gonna get.
Okay.
Or what the town's gonna get from FEMA. So, it will reduce your taxation depending what we get and when we get it. So I just wanted to kind of, those were my notes to tell me that's what that's gonna do. Um, your wording here is what, um...
It just seems, if you read it, it just sounds like it's, any funds received from FEMA on this project will be applied to the cost of this project. But if it, it just makes it sound like it could be, go beyond the two hundred thousand if FEMA is involved. Like add on to the two hundred thousand with FEMA's help, that's what I think.
Is, is there an estimate for the entire project that's just point to know? Got it? Please.
There is an estimate, and that's why we put not to exceed two hundred thousand. This was the second flood, I think it was, when this happened, and we still haven't got any FEMA money from the first flood. So, this is put in 'cause it needs to be done. And FEMA might not kick in for another two years.
No, I'm not objecting it, I just, I'm just questioning.
That's why it says not to exceed two hundred thousand. And if we get fifty thousand from FEMA, FEMA, then that's what's gonna go on here. So, we don't know how much we're gonna give them, like Tammy said, it's just...
And the reason why I put project is that FEMA divides each one of these projects out by roads and I mean, I, we probably have, what, eleven projects? Um, in our FEMA quarter right now. So this is why this one is devoted to this project because that's how I'm dealing with FEMA on it. And that's just how I specify on that.
Okay.
Okay, um... It doesn't say the project, uh, it's more, I understand what she's saying, if you read that, um, two hundred thousand raised, any funds received from FEMA on this project will be applied to the cost of the board. And I think maybe if you say reducing to two hundred thousand, you see what I'm, because I, yeah, and I'm not saying, I, but I...
But I can't even tell you we're gonna get a dime from FEMA.
And you may not, but, yeah. FEMA, but if FEMA doesn't, it'll be two hundred, but if FEMA doesn't, it'll reduce that two hundred thousand.
If FEMA gives us anything, it will be, um, seventy-five percent FEMA part of, um, part will come from the state and then we would have to have our ten percent. Arty has got multiple, we've gotten what we think this is gonna cost us, that's why we did with the not to exceed, um...
Any money, you don't get anything.
Exactly.
If you go, you two hundred thousand, that's a good possibility, but if you can get, let's say fifty thousand. Then it would only, taxation would be a hundred fifty, right?
Correct, yes, yes.
Before I act, uh, receive any more questions, I broke the rules on this one. And this is just for future reference. Troy made the motion in good faith, okay? When you make the motion to accept them as written, there is no discussion. So from now on, if this happens and I don't catch it and you wanna talk about one of the articles in that group, please raise your hand.
I, I did, you didn't, you didn't call them.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Because the way you voted, you voted to accept it as written, which means no discussion, so please yell at me next time you have a question.
I put my hand up and you're like, all, all in favor? Two seconds is not long.
Maybe I thought, maybe I thought you were voting, but anyway, just for future reference, if you want to question one of those articles, bring it to my attention, we'll exclude it out of those, okay? So that does conclude today's meeting, thank you for coming, and yes, you can say anything now, please, hold on. What?
What happened, the eighty thousand dollar grant for the snowmobile trail, where'd that go?
The eighty thousand dollar grant for the snowmobile trail. We're in open session now, people, say anything, long talk.
I don't understand where, what do you mean, where did it go? What do you mean, where did it go?
Where it goes?
Was this done through the town or through the county or public?
No, yeah, it's on the snowmobile grant, it's an ATV grant, the state.
ATV grant through the state.
They fixed up the trail, they fixed up the bridge. Have you noticed the bridge has been redone?
What's that?
The bridge in North Anson, have you noticed that's been redone?
I know, but where did the money go, who got the money?
The people who built the bridge.
Contract.
Contract.
What about the railroad bed itself, we did a lot of work on that.
Correct, and to get that grant, you gotta, you gotta have a match, is it ten percent, Arty? So when we use our payday to do that, then that is our match and we're gonna have to expend the money out. Plus they also, the state had talked to Arty about, um, put in, you put healthy and down, I'm trying to say it wrong, um, to do that, and they also reimbursed the towns for that. So, I mean, I have all the expenditures, you can come in, I can show you where every, every dime went on that. Um, and the state's the one that, that, um, cuts the check after we submit, um, the expenditures to them. And we have that money and that money's been already put back in the town account.
Excuse me?
Your account.
Our general fund account.
So what?
Our general fund, well, account.